Be used for amenity space as well as their rental center. The applicant believes they'll be starting construction next year. So again, that one just came in. I believe we are still in the public comment review process on the Camilla Court project. Our second project right now, we're just calling it Unico, but obviously it's the the big redevelopment of the Boeing Longacre site. Right now, obviously, the Sounders are under construction. I have a slide later in the presentation to talk about that. But but the Unico site is, again, that overall master plan redevelopment of the entire Longacre site, which is, the applicant believes they're going to bring in about 3,000 residential units, 160,000 square feet of retail, what they're calling 2.2 square feet of employment uses. So those are some of the office spaces that they have there and that will continue to build. They'll bring in a new hotel, a music venue. They've got the space, obviously, for the Sounders and then about a half a million square feet of what they're calling TBD space. Again, this is very early in the process. They have not come in for their application yet. We are working with them to get them in hopefully before the end of the year. We think it's likely that this project is going to require an environmental impact statement. So we'd like to get that process started as soon as we can. And we are working with the developer to get that in again, hopefully before the end of the year. Our next pipeline project.
All right, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but on on this one, it would be very helpful on this Unico site map. If we could get a legend that corresponds with the numbers on the buildings.
Absolutely. Council President, what I can do is follow up with the council to provide a little bit more context to this map, what we have.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, again, I apologize. This is very preliminary. We don't have a formal application in yet, so a lot of this stuff is or a lot of these materials are preliminary in nature, but I will surely follow up with council with all the information that we have.
Thank you.
Our next pipeline project is the Logan Six project. This is a redevelopment, or I'm sorry, this is a new development of a vacant site. It's just right across the street from Memorial Stadium. They plan on building a six-story mixed-use development, providing about 100 market rate units, some ground floor commercial space and the amount of about 6,300 square feet. Again, more structured parking, so you're not going to see surface parking in any of these projects and rooftop amenities for the residents. Hopefully getting construction started next year. We believe this project will be going to hearing before the end of the year, likely in about December. Our next project, again, more pipeline, more housing. I think you'll see a theme here in our presentation, lots of housing in the pipeline and under construction, keeping CED busy. This pipeline project, I think most of you are aware, the redevelopment of the old Fry's electronics site. We're excited to get this one underway. This was entitled, fully entitled earlier this year. We're waiting for building and construction permits to come in. But this will be three buildings in three phases over the next 10 years, bringing in almost 1,200 units of housing, almost 50,000 square feet of retail and over 1,600 parking spaces, again, structured. The Live Away Hotel, this is Phase Two of the Topgolf development. This was also entitled earlier this year. This will bring in about 126 guests in this four-story building. Some onsite parking, this, again, this is Phase Two. This is on the east side of the Topgolf site. Not shown here is Phase Three, which is also entitled and it's a small-scale retail building. Two tenants probably going to be of the restaurant variety. The Kennydale Gateway Project, this went in from the Seattle developer Vulcan. This is a mixed-use development up near Exit Seven. The former Panabod site. For context here, this is three, four-story buildings, again, another three-phase project, but they're going to take each phase pretty much consecutively. They're shooting for completion in 2025, almost 400 residential units, just about 1,500 square feet of retail and again, more parking. This pipeline project up in the Highlands is called Towns on 12th. This is a fee simple townhome project. This is sandwiched in between Northeast 12th and Sunset Boulevard. The closest intersection, I guess, would be Union Avenue. They are going to provide new street infrastructure, attractive housing, retention of a lot of the native trees, as well as providing a wetland buffer for just the off-site wetland buff, off-site wetlands and a buffer onsite with opportunities for open space around. Construction is expected to begin on that one next year. And starting the projects that are underway, I know everybody knows about Solera, but we we love to hype this project. I included a picture here. This is myself and American Planning Association President Angela Brooks, who came and toured the project this summer. We are really excited to host our APA president as well as her partners at the National League of Cities. They have heard about this project nationally. They're interested in how they were able to get this entitled so quickly. They were interested in the financing of this project. We got to sit down with developers, Devco. They were nice enough to host us and and have a tour of the project underway. Again, this is 275 units of affordable housing. This is a mixed income project. That's why it's so great. 315 market rate units. We've got 96 fee simple townhomes coming in the final phase. All structured parking, you're not going to, the only parking you're going to see on this site is the public parking on the new roads that they'll be completed. So you're not going to see expansive seas of parking that was here at the former, obviously, the former Highland Shopping Center. So they are at it. I know that Jenna had a photo, a similar photo taken by a drone earlier this year. I think this is a more updated one. You're you're seeing all the the wood frame construction just about completed on two of these podiums. For context, the 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 podium or the block on the right side of the screen, that is the affordable housing block. And on the block on the south, on the left side, is the market rate. When you look at this project, you're likely not going to be able to tell which is which, which is another great aspect to this project. We're looking forward to this being completed, the affordable building, the northern block in 2024 and the market rate block in 2025. Just across the street here on the other side of the park, another project we're excited about, Sunset Terrace Apartments. This is just about done. They have some punch list items that they need to do. But this is the city's, or I'm sorry, the Sunset Master Plan's first market rate project to come out of the ground. This is 108 units. There's two ground floor retail spaces undergoing temporary tenant improvement building permits right now. They share parking with the library next door. They're virtually connected. So another great project in the Sunset area. The Sunset Gardens project is the redevelopment of the Renton Housing Authority's former administrative offices. They took the opportunity, they knew they they needed new administrative offices. They outgrew their space, but why not provide housing on the site as well? So they are going to have their new administrative offices on the ground floor and provide 76 affordable housing units on top. We are hoping to get them in, they need to be in there at the beginning of next year. So what we're working with the Housing Authority is ensuring that they have some kind of temporary certificate of occupancy for the ground floor while they're finishing up those upper floor units. So really excited about this project for the Renton Housing Authority and get them in their new digs. I I know everybody knows about this project. It's right across the street. It's really been fun watching this one go up. This is the Watershed Apartments. This is developed by GMD Development. They are a nonprofit developer out of Seattle. They are going to be providing 145 affordable housing units. And it's it's a great mix. It's a mix of one, two, three bedroom units. One of the great aspects of this project is that on the west side of the property, they're going to create this great pedestrian promenade that is actually going to link up with the Burnett Linear Park. So as those, as one parcel to the, I believe, north redevelops, we'll be able to get an easement and make that full connection. So we'll have, you know, this great pedestrian connection from City Hall that goes down, you know, along this promenade, along Burnett Linear Park into the downtown. So a great civic connection. The Sounders are underway. They're out there moving dirt right now. And they're also in the building doing some tenant improvements. They are working on getting their four soccer fields and their goalkeeper's field in order and ready to go for 2024. And finally, this is the last one here. This is a great reuse of the old FAA building. They left a few years ago, a vacant building. University of Washington came in during the pandemic and saw a need because they needed an off-site testing facility for for COVID testing. So they came to the city and we found in this place, you know, the ground floor of this building. And now they are looking to consolidate all of their, they call it their non-emergency testing into into this building. So they'll be taking the rest of the building. They're looking at 700 staff members, lots of jobs here. We're working on with them to get their conditional use permit for the remaining part of the building as well as their tenant improvement building permit. So they can begin their operation and be fully built out in this building in the spring of 2024. And that was our final slide for pipeline and projects underway. I'll kick it back to Jenna.
Okay, looking to the future, I think we wanted to leave you with the concept of building a robust team. Every project you saw up there, every effort that we are embarking on as an economic development division will require strong partnerships with the private sector, with internally with city departments, with community organizations, the whole gamut. So that was kind of the thought we wanted to leave you with. As we work to the future, it's going to be about partnerships and building a strong, robust team.
Yes, actually, I'd like to kick this off with one of my own questions, if that's okay. Thank you. I don't know, maybe it's just me, but on the Solera project, we have mixed market. We have the market rate and then the lower income.
Yes.
Why are they segregated into separate buildings?
Initially, we wanted them to be integrated in both buildings and we worked really hard with the developer. And that was actually part of the initial entitlement. As the developer was out getting financing, they just could not make it work. They could not get financing with the integration of it totally mixed. So we had to go back and think about how, because again, that was our preference too. How do we make this? How do we make this work for the developer? How do we make it work for the city? And it was really ensuring that both of those buildings were going to be constructed of the same material. They were going to have the same opportunities for amenities. You know, the finishes were going to be similar. So that's what we needed to do to to make that work. Obviously not our preferred option, but in the financing environment, that's what that's what needed to happen.
So the finance, the people providing the financing were the ones who balked?
Yes, yes, they they would not finance a project that had the integrated. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Nope, I'm done.
So the only thing I was going to add is that the discussions we had with Devco early on, they were really creative. They advanced lots of opportunities to integrate the two into the same structure. They went so far as attempting to condominiumize different floors of those buildings because the funding sources, they had to piece together a whole package of funding sources. And their obligations underneath those funding sources needed a specific property to tie to. And then the market rate was financed another way. So they did everything they could to integrate those. Ultimately, at the end of the day, to get that funding and to be able to deliver those affordable housing units, they did have to segregate them into a unique building and property description.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Gina and Matt, for the great presentation. Gina, my question for you is several years back, we went through a process where we did community plans for all the different communities. Are you going to marry the economic development strategy you have for the different areas of Renton to those community plans?
That's a really good question. The answer would be yes. All of what we would do as an economic development team would be to strengthen the work you've done with your planning, years and years of planning. So yes, we have just, we haven't really even officially rolled out our action plan. I did feel it was important to take time to really learn the city. So there is still quite a bit of information that personally I need to sift through, but the answer is yes.
Awesome. I just, I know we had a lot of residents who labored for a lot of hours on those plans. I wanted to make sure whatever we were doing on the economic economic development front was married to what we did in the community plan. So thank you.
Thank you both for your presentation. It was great. Very refreshing to see a presentation that we're talking about economic development that actually talk about the whole, all neighborhoods. I feel like in the last years, we were very narrow to certain areas of the city and we didn't bring that vision to the whole city. So I do appreciate the fact that we recognize that the whole city has the potential, you know, for for development and that's great. Any news about the Southport building? Any, any, anything happening there?
Do you have any, the Southport building, nothing new. Definitely trying to recruit new tenants. I know the new owners are. We have met with them. They do seem to be good players. I think they'll be able to integrate well with the goals and activities that we want to see for Southport. But I have not heard anything outside the norm of.
No, I, what I'll say is that the new tenants, when we met with them, they seemed bullish on recruitment for the office space. They were, they talked about setting up a, I don't know what the exact correct term is, but a mock office floor. As you know, it's a shell building, so the tenants come in and do the tenant improvements based on the user. So they were going to do that upfront investment to attempt to facilitate leasing of the existing building. They have also some other really creative ideas in terms of creating connections between other parts of the city. And I felt that the conversation really went well and I'm hopeful to see them succeed. And then we can talk about the next phase of development down there with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenna, you talked about Fatamala as a business liaison. I've got, you say you talked to, she talks to ones that want to come here and and, you know, kind of work with them, figure out this and the other. My question is, how does she, how does she find those businesses that want to come here? And does she, secondly, proactively search for for that audience, those audience of business, that audience of businesses to?
Yeah. So so far, she has done both. She has engaged with businesses that have come to the city interested to do a pre-application or what have you. She has met with companies that are businesses that have expressed interest through just the grapevine. So she's reached out to them. And then we are starting to talk about the best avenue to reach out beyond. So the pitch was really good for us. We learned about and we met people that were interested in starting a business in Renton. Just by, for example, talking to many of them, we have learned that they have friends in, you know, Ballard Business Community or what have you, that would like to look at Renton as a as a place to start the business. So she is going to be embarking on all of that. She has been dabbling in each. I think the the part we haven't really initiated yet is true outreach because we really wanted to get strong with what our program looked like before we launched a hard launch of the business liaison.
Thank you so much for such a great question. I was curious, in regards to the projects that are in the pipeline, how many have affordable units slated for them?
I would need to follow up with you, Councilmember Rivera, on the exact number. But there, there were a number in that in that slideshow, you know, Watershed, Solera. Let me follow up with you on the exact number on that one.
I would really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Madam President, thank you again for the presentation. There, this is a great update. I just wanted to understand, what are, you know, as you set out, the goal is here to support small businesses and independent businesses. Are there any concrete things that you're currently doing? And I know you mentioned about the think tank, but just kind of what are the things you guys are doing? And if there's any timeline, if you have a timeline of those activities?
The the magnitude of what we're doing, it's it's interesting. You know, if you think about, you know, Jesse's work with the arts in downtown, really trying to create a place or a culture in downtown that's really attractive to come and and, you know, visit as a, as a, you know, just coming to and spend your money versus starting a business there. There are so many small efforts happening that ultimately drive that support. But one example would be the business liaison. Another would be Jesse's work in downtown, creating that culture that would really foster new investment, new businesses. Because the the small businesses really need those older, unique spaces. Often they cannot afford the large triple net type Southport type level retail space. So we are talking about trying to really have a real good, solid list of square footage, what's available, what's not. And the trick to that really for us is trying to figure out a good way to track its movement in real time. So Amanda and I have been talking a lot about our future needs in the realm of this vacant space or vacant position. And in the, in kind of the context of, should it be a communications type person or a more economist type person to help inform some of those small business needs? That would be helpful to have that economist. Or should it be more of a marketing person? Because the one thing that I did not mention about the communications contract with Pyramid is a lot of these small businesses cannot market themselves, their word of mouth or or their own little social media. We have a larger reach and if we do it right, we could really be that larger reach for them as a collective. So that's one of our goals with that program. Let me think if there's, off the top of my head, that's what's coming up. That's an answer, yeah.
Let's back to me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go back to you again if you want.
Thank you. So my question is along the same vein as Councilmember Rivera's question on affordable housing, although a little bit more specific. Looking at the Kennydale Gateway Project, it didn't list any affordable units and I'm going to go ahead and assume it does not include it.
That's correct.
So similar to the Rainier Grady's TOD subarea plan, are we doing anything particularly in this area around the creation of affordable units, knowing it's going to be served by a BRT station?
Yes, we we do have that area targeted in our MFTE opportunity zone, so yes.
I'll add one more thing. The other thing that we we received grant funding about a year ago to do a planned action EIS for that area. And we are currently underway on that that document. We should have the draft EIS hopefully out for public comment, maybe Q1 of next year. The beauty of that document is what it will do is it creates predictability for developers, although it doesn't target specifically affordable housing per se. But by having that predictability and to know exactly what the mitigation might be for development allows developers to really look at their bottom line and be able to predict that. So they can go out for funding to maybe support affordable housing projects. The other piece to that is Sound Transit owns the property down there and they have policy to surplus for affordable housing. So hopefully our partnership with Sound Transit will result in some affordable housing development near the TOD because of that.
In in the mix of housing that's in the pipeline, I noticed that Logan Six, Bay West, Kennydale Gateway and Unico, none of those mentioned fee simple condos. So my question is, what are we doing to promote fee simple overlays in order to create ownership opportunities?
Well, a lot of that's going to start at the state level. Right now, there is a lot of liability for condominiumizing these flat type of units. And you're not even really seeing them come up that much in Seattle either. I know that there's work at the state legislature to unwind some of these old prescriptive requirements that essentially, you know, when these, when these units get condomized or condominiumized later on, the HOAs going to litigation and because, you know, there's faulty workmanship, those types of things. So I know that there's work at the state legislature to unwind some of that. I believe just in the past two years, they've done a little bit of that unwinding. We're hoping as we move forward, they'll do some more. But I know as far as entry level homeownership, we we recognize that that's that's an important opportunity for someone to get in.
The reason I ask is because some of the other properties did mention fee simple. So it's obviously happening.
Right. And the fee simple that I did mention, those were for townhomes. So that would be, you know, obviously owning the land underneath. So that Solera project did have fee simple. That was, that'll be a subdivision. So folks will be able to come in and and buy a townhome as well as Towns on 12th, also fee simple. So that's another townhome project. So we are seeing fee simple in townhome projects, absolutely. But as far as stacked flats, apartment type of condominiums, we're just not seeing that yet.
Yeah. So I think maybe I misspoke my question. How are we promoting fee simple townhome projects for ownership opportunities? Whatever it takes to get fee simple ownership opportunity, whether it's a flat or a townhome or whatever.
No, I I mean, well, just the opportunity itself to come in and what we call a unit lot subdivision. Developers come in and see an opportunity to add density to areas through this fee simple townhome unit lot subdivision. As far as 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 marketing those or promoting those as the city, I mean, just the, just the opportunity. I think it's a fairly new process that we've started, maybe within the past five years, to allow these unit lot subdivisions.
If I can add to what Matt has said, I am really proud of our council for you all enacting this fee simple legislation. A number of years ago, we were one of the first jurisdictions in the state to allow what we call unit lot subdivisions, which is basically drawing the lot line right around the foundation of the unit. And that, what that does is it makes the financing for the homeowner a lot easier because they own the land versus the condominium challenges. So we have, we enacted that a number of years ago. As Matt said, we have found a lot of folks utilizing that for their subdivisions. So I think it's been successful. We have expanded that in the last year to our cottage development, which is not attached units, but yes, a different type of unit in terms of the square footage is smaller. We have seen a number of pre-apps come through for cottage housing. We haven't had anything come to formal application yet. And then the, on the flip side, in terms of the condominium, I I will never miss an opportunity to ask for condominium in vertical development and push developers to do that. Ask them what they need to help get there as we try to advance homeownership. We do see no's a lot of times, but we'll continue to advocate for and communicate and see what we can do locally to help support that.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam President, thank you. Those the Watershed has have parking?
Does have parking. It has structured parking, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to go back to the the business side of things for a second. You know, one of the things I've always said, it's definitely better to build it by design than by default. And so what what I'm hearing a lot of that is that you're really trying to do that. My question is, you know, what what outside input from the from the community at large, I guess, you know, when you think about, are you seeking to to drive your proactive outreach and like the cluster identification and all that? I know internally, you're trying to figure that out. But when it comes to quite simply, hey, what do the people want? What 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 should this business environment look like? Tell me about kind of. Tell me about kind of where you're at with that. Maybe that's down the line or what you're doing as far as that goes. That makes sense?
Yeah. The outreach beyond the city internal right now is, we haven't embarked on that. And what I think our first, I was really excited because this is the first time I've had the opportunity to present to you and, and also get feedback. So the next step I think is more of, you know, we did this brown paper exercise, which is this collaborative approach to brainstorming an idea and bringing forth a, you know, a work plan or a, a mission based on a very short but succinct process. And I feel like that would be a helpful step in informing us as to what, what does the city first feel is the clusters we should be focusing on. And then once we have a good understanding of that, bring that up to the community. And I think it would be also important to kind of decide who would be that audience? Who, who would be informing us on those clusters? Is it residents? Is it other businesses? Is it everybody? But that would be all part of the discussion. So these, like I said, we haven't really rolled out these action plans, but that's part of the next phase is getting it beyond our team of, of 10 plus. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I keep forgetting to look this way.
You're totally fine. It's okay. I'm on your left. On that note, I would be, I think, a mistake of me not to mention, in terms of the Benson area, the Cascade Village, I have been a vocal advocate for that area in terms of some investment and redevelopment and beautification. And so I'll just put that on your radar. The Cascade Village in the Benson area would definitely be an area, an area of economic development. Right, Vanessa?
Okay, we've got a couple more minutes.
Thank you. So the idea for Costco, I know, would be very exciting to some folks. One of the themes I noticed in the presentation was the lack of large surface parking areas. Would we be potentially looking more to something similar that happened in South LA where they had a Costco with 800 units of housing on top? Instead of having a large parking lot potentially?
I think that's also part of why we ended with partnerships. Because as land supply becomes more and more difficult to achieve what we want to achieve, single use development is becoming a thing of the past from my perspective. So yes, that LA Costco is a perfect example of what we'd like to see. So it's really about now bringing, you know, Costco, they have one thing, they do well. So we, to see something like that, I think would have to bring a partner to the table and start massaging that relationship to really be able to see that happen in Renton. Because naturally, a company like Costco is going to stick with what they know best. So again, bringing that partnership together and enabling them to, to, to give us a shot in that kind of capacity.
Okay, I'd like to end on what, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question and I would love to get the information in terms of actual attainable, attainable, affordable housing. And when you're able to get that information, but also it's, it's concerning to me. I know there's some areas that's more of transit oriented housing. But what, if you could enlighten us in terms of the process when an application goes through in the hearing, how long does it take in terms of the permit? And I know it depends, but kind of generally speaking. And it's great that we're having all the building and economic growth, but I think it has to be very much intentional and at this time where there's a lot of traffic needs and concerns that I hear from community. I just wanted to kind of get your perspective and kind of the timeline.
Sure. No, thank you. For a project of the size of, say, Watershed or Solera, those bigger buildings, with affordable housing, they require a public hearing. Typically, they require environmental review. What we tell applicants and what we strive to get them through the door in about 12 weeks from the time they submit their initial application. We're obligated by state law to get them through in 120 days. But we strive to, to beat that timeline. We're typically fairly successful in getting them through that stage. So that, going through that environmental review, looking at those traffic impacts, looking at parking, looking at design review. We do our own in-house design review administratively. A lot of other jurisdictions have outside design review boards. That often adds time. So I know I hear from other jurisdictions and other developers that, that have issues with permitting outside of Renton. I think we do a really good job to get the, get their entitlements in place. And then once they do get that entitlement in place, they can submit for their building and construction permits. And we're typically seeing a timeline on that between about four to six weeks to get that initial round of, of comments out.
I'll just add one thing, just the, the process that Matt described includes a number of touchpoints with the community to provide that feedback and that engagement, as you're talking about, in terms of their concerns, whether it be traffic or otherwise. There is a public comment period, there's the public hearing. We try really hard to listen to the community. They know their neighborhoods, they know their blocks, they know what happens 24 hours a day, and that's why they're important to that conversation. So each of our project managers work closely, they collect all those public comments, they become a part of the record and they inform that decision. If that decision's made at the administrator level, we look at it really closely. It's brought before Environmental Review Committee to consider. And then if that decision is made at the hearing examiner level, they also look at those comments really closely before he makes that decision.
And I'd also add.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're going to have to wrap this up because we have another meeting coming up. I just want to, I want to end on one comment with the Benson diverse business think tank. Let's go to them. Let's not ask them to come to us. Let's do it in their neighborhood.
That's absolutely the plan.
Thank you. And thank you very much for this presentation. Very, very informative.